There you go. Perfect, alright. You have to move that, that, okay. Good evening, I would like to welcome everyone to this Friday evening, special meeting at the Acheson County Courthouse. I want to make sure that the public is aware that our public hearing time and date that was published in the Globe and by state statute will remain on Sunday at ten fifteen. However, because of the state statute deadlines, Sunday is never a good day to schedule a meeting, so we wanted to have this additional opportunity on this Friday evening after work to allow people to come and to talk to us about our budgets. Want to provide an update of where we were at the beginning with our R and R, and then also where we are today. Also, I want to remind everyone that the purpose of this hearing is for comments on the budget as a whole. It is appropriate to talk about policy choices, service levels, and tax impacts. It is not appropriate to name or discuss specific employees, their work performance, or their pay. I want to encourage everyone that identifying specific employees who may have been affected by decisions is not allowed. Commissioners are not allowed to discuss any non-elected personnel and out in an open meeting. So just want to set the stage with those ground rules, and then also just give you guys an update. Before I call, just as an introduction here, so when you guys came to the R and R hearing and you got your R and R statement in the mail, it started at sixty-eight point nine five one mils. That was fifteen million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars in ad valorem taxes or property taxes. As of the end of our meeting on Tuesday, we ended up at fifty-nine point two zero one mils or thirteen million five hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars in ad valorem taxes, property taxes. So that was a reduction of nine point seven five mils or two million two hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So where we are today is fifty-nine point two oh one mils, which is a seven point three three percent higher than the twenty-twenty-five mil levy of fifty-four point eight six one. But there is no cash being put into this budget at all, so wanting to make that clear. So that was a million three hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars more in ad valorem than in twenty-twenty-five. So just wanted to set the ground rules, give a quick update so that everyone's aware of where we are, and then ask our county clerk if you would please provide roll call for this evening's meeting.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Present.
Commissioner Noel?
Here.
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
May I please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Persons who wish to address the county commission can do so, we don't have a podium, but we have the seat right under the microphone. And we'll just come up one at a time, we're going to limit to three minutes roughly to give your name, address when addressing the commission. And yeah, so we would like to invite whoever would like to come first up under the microphone.
And we can talk about any, anything that you're.
Sure.
Yeah, just not specific, yeah, anything budget-related, overall, dude. Yes, please.
I'll be the first one, sure.
Let me guess the topic.
Yes. The topic. Okay, my name is Deanna Sunderman-Paul, and I live in Lancaster, Kansas.
How are you doing?
I'm good. My topic is about the budget for Project Concern and possible closing of Senior Center in Effingham, which is very much a great need out there. That's why we don't have a lot of people that come to the center, is because a lot of the budget ends up being used for Project Concern and not us. And, you know, their transportation is so high out there, cost for it, and the meals have gotten mainly processed meals. You know, can I say why I'm here?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm the manager of Town and Country.
Oh.
Yeah. And I've worked really hard, you know, I've been there eleven years, I've worked really hard to get people in there, I do do extra activities there. You know, when I first got hired on, Eric's mom came to the center, you know, until she passed, so, you know, a lot of the seniors know me really well, we consider ourselves family. When you walk in, you're treated as family, it's very welcoming, it's very inviting. So, you know, I just want to make sure that it's going to stay open for these people and.
Do you mind if I ask you a question?
Yes.
So I, I had reached out to the board presidents to ask what the impact would be on county residents and heard back that it would be minimal, and how many people would be affected by the closure, roughly four to six persons that keep, persons attend Effingham Center per day, is that correct?
No.
Okay, how many?
No, on Mondays I have ten to eleven people, Tuesdays I have anywhere from ten to fifteen people, Wednesdays I have twenty-plus people, Thursdays I go back down to eleven, Fridays is my really slow day and it could be anywhere from five to seven people. As for an impact on people, through even just the home meals, that may be what he's talking about, because there's only seven meals going out in the city. But the driver that brings the food out to me has twenty people out in the county that he delivers to. So there's more than just four to six people impact. You know, if the meals were better, we would have better.
Sure.
You know. Cause I've had, you know, I've had people over the years start meals and then drop them because the meals are crap, basically.
A lot of that's timing because the meals are prepped, cooked to what, eight thirty, nine o'clock in the morning?
Yes.
And they are in the hot box at Effingham, at what time do they deliver?
Anywhere from eight thirty to nine thirty.
So can you imagine lasagna that's been sitting in the cooker for another three and a half, four hours? So I would like to address that. If, if the center's open and stuff, we have a project concern or meeting October first or third, I just seen, it hasn't been set yet, so it's upcoming, I'll let people know.
Okay. But yes, they do, they do come out early. There's not much I can do about the home meals because they're already sealed. You know, for my people, anything that is cold goes in the refrigerator, you know, if it's something that's already been cooked and I know if I put it on the steam table and it's going to get overcooked, then I stick it in the oven, I'm warm, and keep it warm until it gets closer to the time of lunch.
So with the numbers that I spoke at the beginning of the meeting, we have a hundred thousand figured into Project Concern. With that being said, I just want to make known my personal feelings of, although this does not fall as a statutory requirement.
Right.
I know the need of that in the western part of the county and having that center in Effingham, but I am only okay with that amount in our budget if we get a memorandum of understanding with the Project Concern Board or something that solidifies that our appropriation will keep that center open. Because that's what we were told when we had to ask, is in order to keep Effingham open, we will need, that's what they said when they came here, so I just want to make sure that we have something in writing so that.
They said a hundred thousand?
The, it's, it's the same as last year.
Okay, yeah, I get that.
So that's not what they, they asked for one twenty-five. After we missed the, the commitment or soft commitment because we couldn't.
Right.
It's not a commitment until we pass the budget.
Exactly.
So we attended a meeting and our intentions at that time and, and which could be changed was a hundred thousand. But when they had heard the hundred thousand, they asked for one twenty-five.
Okay.
So just because we passed the one hundred thousand does not mean that it's an automatic that they're going to keep funding it.
Okay.
Uh, so how else was I going to add on to that? Also, something that we were, well, that's internal, and we're not to that point yet, but yes, we will be working on a memorandum of understanding with them. If they, if they reject that funding, there's nothing we can do because they are their own entity.
Yeah, I understand that.
Luckily, we have board members here though, so that's good to see.
Yes, we appreciate you, board members.
Who's the new director? Do you have a name?
I haven't met her yet.
She is here.
Hello. Hi, nice to meet you.
Hello, yes, I didn't have a chance because I was on vacation the last meeting, so I didn't get a chance to.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you say your name, please?
Talina Bromley.
Talina Bromley, okay, thank you very much, it's nice to meet you finally.
Nice to meet you too.
Okay, so, you know, I just wanted to give my opinion of what, you know, Effingham Center does do a lot for the seniors out there, you know, socially, because socially if they didn't have it, because a lot of them don't drive out of town, they drive from their house to the center. And so, you know, it would create a lot of isolation.
Yes, and it's also, it's not just the center, it's those home-delivered meals.
Home-delivered meals, oh, yes.
I believe at the time I was told, when I was asking about the initial funding, I said, well, if you funded it fifty thousand, we'll probably keep the rural meals going, but close the center. So it really was just fifty thousand for the center.
Mm-hmm.
So, but of course, those are old figures and requests have changed. Also, I'd seen where, they said it costs one-ten, one hundred and ten thousand now to run Effingham, but the, yes, that's where I saw that, but the last thing I had got was, well, I don't think this one's even right, because I was thinking it was one hundred thousand, like, three hundred, one hundred thousand, three hundred dollars would, would fund it all.
Right.
So that's the reason we kept the request, the captive level.
Yeah.
Especially in this budget year.
Okay, well.
As the center manager, you have a lot of support behind you, I've heard from so many constituents all over Acheson County that are supportive of that Town and Country Center, so.
Yeah, because when I first started eleven years ago, it was doing lucky to have seven meals a week. You know, so, yeah, I have brought it up, but then, you know, COVID hit, people pass on and they go elsewhere and.
I don't want this to also look like it's, we're only interested in Effingham, because I, I'm interested in the.
In the whole, yes, in the whole.
And so we were kind of.
That was how the funding request was given to us.
Yes, we're answering. We're answering the questions that we've been given, you know, and so all of a sudden, it struck me that people that are watching us are going like, well, don't Acheson matter, well, this, this is the, the mechanism and everything that we've been presented, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, in my opinion, Acheson's always been the big thing and Effingham has been on the back burner.
Well, I'm a hundred percent for keeping it open.
Yeah.
I'm hoping.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping they keep it open too.
And maybe we can work out some of the details and come up with something.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty good. I'll let you know when the next meeting.
Three minutes.
Is planning scheduled.
Okay. All right.
Into the conversation, sorry guys. He's the timer that's going to ding and tell me, stop talking, sorry about that, guys, okay.
Your board members over here, have you been getting the emails on the meeting for October first or?
We got it today, but we did not get them for the last meeting.
That's the reason, all of a sudden, it's like, I need to make sure that you're getting them, so, thank you.
You here?
Yeah.
Name, hey, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Fine, Brandy Folsom, eighty-two thirty-two Garfield Road. As I was reading through the ledger here, and I appreciate you guys giving us the budget and the breakdown, but I see on your year of twenty-three and twenty-four, we don't show what we were spending out for Senior Village before it got sold, nor do I see on there where what you were saving on employees' wages, benefits, or even the overhaul, overall expense that they had, where those funds are being allocated to.
So Senior Village was never part of our general fund, so it's not part of that, they had separate financials that were not within the county budget.
So where's those funds going then?
So, that we sold, the, the capital funds, they're in a capital fund. I don't know if I have the number, but they're sitting in a separate fund in our, I could get, but they're in a separate fund in.
Savings.
Well, yeah, a capital fund, we just put them into a ninety, was it ninety-day CD to earn interest? So yes, but they're, they're completely separate from county general and, and our budget.
So that's just going to sit there for a few years?
Well, we need to have a full plan to know what we're going to do with it, we're looking at utilizing it for more capital improvements within the county, but we don't have all the, all the details yet of what that looks like.
And can you explain to me why we went ahead and redrew up the blueprints for the county shop?
So I have not seen the, the old blueprints, I've inquired about them throughout different.
It was under Seth Howard.
Well, not there, I was just going to say, I can't talk about people, but throughout different leadership, there is a lot of things that get, documents disappear. So we had, I have not seen anything prior to what has been drawn up since I've been here.
I've never, I don't remember even seeing them.
Yeah, they were.
But it's possible, because you see a lot of stuff.
We had that same problem at Senior Village too, as leadership and admins change, you come in and the books would be gone or, you know.
Okay. Those were the couple of things I was asking, so are, I can't tell by the budget, are you still proceeding to move on with the county shop this coming year?
We don't have all of the information to make that decision at this time.
I mean, I know they need a shop, but at the same time, from being an ex-employee from here, I kind of know the inside of what used to go on out there, what kind of equipment they have and such, so that's why I was asking.
I have been against it because, no, we need the shop.
Yes.
When the last year's budget and this year's budget have hit the way they are, I was for not going forward with it, and then until we get a plan to completely pay for not just the building, but all the grading, the fencing, utilities and everything, so that hasn't been addressed yet.
Okay.
And I can tell you, I've been like a roller coaster on this ride, because when we first got the initial numbers back, they were like ridiculous, and I was like, there's no way, like, there's no way we're going to do that. And so then with the capital funds of Senior Village, in order to improve the county and look forward and knowing just what you said, we need a facility that people can work out of, that is, I mean, because we're literally throwing money away trying to patch that thing in the current condition it's been in. So utilizing the capital funds and saying, this is the only dollars we have at this point to make a difference out there, and if we can do that, but we're not there yet, because we keep hearing, you know, unknowns and different things. So we're at the point of compiling dollars and estimated costs to see what this looks like, and then from then, we'll be able to add that to a timeline of execution, but we just don't have all the pieces to give you what that looks like yet.
Okay, but that will be coming out when you get to.
I mean, that's where I stand, but like, like Eric said, he's not, he knows there's a need, but he's not quite there yet either. But we do have those funds that are from the capital sale of Senior Village that, in my opinion, that's what the point of capital, you know, you want to reinvest it in making a difference, and that's.
For your upgrades.
Yeah, the seats we're sitting in, right, like, things have been let go for so long, you can't get caught up, it feels like, always. And then also, watching last year's budget, how that went down and padding it with roughly eight hun, over eight hundred thousand dollars of cash, right? Like, I look at that fund going, sure, we, we could, we could offset the, you know, the mil levy even more with that for this year, but then we'd all be back in the same position next year with nothing to show for it, right? So it's just, we have to have a plan and we have to know we can execute it, and we're just not there yet, in my opinion, but.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it, but, but the numbers are much better than the previous. So you were talking about some plans that were in place before I was ever thought about, right? But the numbers are completely different, they're much lower, it's a much better deal for the, for the county, and so I am for it, and, and, but, but we're not, if you go out to where the facility is going to be, there's nothing there, so we're not, we're not there yet.
Okay.
We're just, we're not there, but there's a need for it, I, I, I don't have any doubt that there's a need for it, so, but.
We just each.
Right now, the priority is getting to the bottom of why our taxes are so high. We have addressed that, trust me, we have addressed it, if you listen to her numbers, you know, we, we, we dropped it, what, two point three million dollars, and none of that was padded, none of it.
I mean, I understand taxes are high, but that's everything and living cost, I just morally, as someone that's had staff under them, I'd rather pay a little more in my taxes than watch jobs be cut when it's their only source of income. But that's just because this is my community I grew up in.
Sure, I understand, cuts, cuts are not easy, they never, we didn't take it lightly at all.
And I can empathize with that statement, knowing from last year, with the cash influx, that we were going to be sitting here this year with this exact same conversation, and we tried to outline that, to tell the public that in our R and R hearing of, this is why we're here, right? Nobody cares, they can't sustain that kind of a tax increase, and so unfortunately, you know, you have to make hard decisions and, and that's where we're at, but we are fortunate that we did get the taxes brought down to seven percent increase, a little over seven point three three, but yeah, not without difficulty, that's for sure.
And the plan going forward is to, for that to go lower, not this year, but that's, this is where we had to stop, because this is as far as we could go this year, but then, but the, the plan is to bring that down further as we go forward.
All right. So I'll just wait for those numbers and watch.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think just to clarify your point, the plan to go lower would be supporting the sales tax that we're hoping to get on the ballot for an initiative to help off, help offset the possibly MS, because we've seen the numbers just skyrocket and you have to have it. And so if we, if we can do that, I think that'll help, but. Um, okay, next, anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah, feel free to come up. I'm on it, Kathy.
I'm not afraid. Um, I just wanted to, my name's Kathy Martin, I'm from Effingham, and I just want to reiterate what Dee said about the Senior Center. And I, I wanted to say thank you guys for at least including us in the budget, getting us some, at one point in time, it was at zero dollars. And now we're at least at a hundred thousand. And while we all know what was mandated by certain entity for their budget is not being met, so I, I just want to say thank you for getting you guys putting in what you have put in, and at least giving us a half a chance to survive it. So, but like Dee said, and, I mean, I've talked, a lot of people up there are very, very upset, very concerned, and they're all saying, we don't want to get shut down, because we, we like our socialization and we like to be able to come up and meet with our friends and have a nice meal. And so, I mean, I just wanted to kind of reiterate that. There's a second question I had, though, I, I'm new to this county, and I've only been here three years, and I, I keep hearing about the sale of the senior home, what was the actual sales amount that was actually the final number that Acheson County received in funds from that sale?
So I will get that to you, and the reason I don't have that right off is, so we had the actual sale and the closing of it, right? And then after that, we continued to have bills that came in that accrued.
Right.
So I don't want to misspeak on that, so I can get the actual sale amount for you.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great. And I, I also wanted to tell you, thank you for coming up with the memo of understanding with regards to the budget for Project Concern. Because, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on there, and I want, I don't want us to get shut down and then have it all coming. I understand Acheson needs it too, I get that, everybody needs it, there's seniors everywhere that need that. So, I mean, but my thing is, is, you know, just because they didn't get what they wanted shouldn't be why they shut us down, so.
We agree.
But, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll speak. They come here to speak, I speak. Since we're members and patrons and manager, again, I'm Talina Bromley. I'm here in Acheson, City Limits, I'm Acheson County. New director of Project Concern, just started August twenty-fifth, so a lot of this is still new to me. So I'm just asking everyone to be patient. Let me get, figure out what's going on, I feel like I am walking into a whirlwind of different comments and different sides and different, like, whoa, 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 all I did was just volunteer for meals for like the last year, and now I'm into a position where it's like, whoa. I did ride with one of our drivers on the first run to the county, and we went to twenty-one homes. There is a need, I see the need, I don't know, I haven't met every board member, I don't know where every board member stands, but I met people face to face, I met the widows, I met the widowers, I met the people who were excited to see the driver, excited to meet me, wanted to have coffee, do you want coffee, do you want to? You know, we probably spent at least fifteen to twenty minutes at each house, just conversating, just meeting them. I'm an emotional person, and I'm sorry, but to see someone light up because they're waiting for you to come, the driver didn't have to knock, he just was like, hey, I'm here, and they were like, come on in, I'm waiting for you. That means a lot, as a caregiver for my grandmother, we had a big family, but still, I wouldn't hate to see her just wait for someone to come every day, just one person. So I see the need for it. Like I said, everyone was very welcoming, everyone was very appreciative of it. I went back out to meet Ms. Dee, because I hadn't met her, and I ended up staying, well, that was the same day I rode, and then I went back out there to interview for a backup assistant for the center, because Ms. Dee, you know, was having some issues and we just need that in place. And ended up staying until lunchtime, so I got to meet a lot of other people in the community, and I think that day, I could be wrong, it might have been ten or twelve people showed up.
You were out there on the tees.
Yeah, so I got to meet a lot of people then too, and again, same reception, heard a lot of concerns, voiced a lot of opinions, and the overall comment was, we don't want to be closed down. And the overall, um, comment was, we don't wanna be closed down. So, um, I'm happy that the hundred thousand is given because I would hate, hopefully it's there. Um, again, I don't know a lot still yet, but I do know that. Riding that route and then being in the center that day. The need is there. I see it, so.
Well, they're very lucky to have someone that cares, because I think that's the biggest thing, is having people who care in our community.
Mine and the commissioner's email address, if you have anything need to, uh, get with. Either myself or the commissioners, sir, send us anything.
Congratulations on your new position and we're excited to see what you do with it.
Um, hopefully I do good. And like I said, I'm, I'm trying, um, I haven't had a chance to have a lot of training yet. With the former director, um, working out of town. I think we've only met. Maybe three times, so I still have several, um, I have a lot to learn. Haven't met all the board members yet, um, but, yeah, I'm glad to be aboard and. Ready to help make some changes.
Awesome, thank you for coming. Anyone else?
No.
Only once? No. Be on there. Okay, any? Anybody else? Nope.
I was gonna ask Kathy, now you're, you're with the cities. Okay, all right, I wanted to write that down.
Okay. So. If nobody else is wanting to speak, then, um, I would go to Commissioner comments, Commissioner Campbell.
Well, you know, so this. Hearing today, we really haven't focused on. Budget, I mean, we haven't had a lot of budget.
Brandy's comments were.
Right.
More, but the rest of it was more project concern.
So we haven't had a lot of budget-focused questions, um. Uh, so I just wanna make a point to say that, uh. I feel really good about where we're at. It, it was a, we weren't. We weren't, uh, happy to have to get to where we did, the way we did it. Um, the, there were some. Picking of a can down the road the last few years. And, um, it just wasn't, we just couldn't do it any longer with, with the county budget. And, um, anybody who owns a home pays property taxes, understands that. There's a breaking point and we, we found it this year. We had to make our choices. And, um, the cuts were just part of it. We're, we, the, the, the budget is a, we did a comprehensive look at the budget. Going forward, it's gonna be that way. We're gonna, we're gonna. Continue to, to look at it, uh, that way and it's not just spending. It's also revenue side, so we're looking at everything. So I want, I want you all to know and anybody watching or listening that, um. The budget is gonna get finalized here soon and, uh, but that's not the end of it. Because we're looking forward to reducing. You know, as we go forward, twenty-seven and, and beyond, and, uh, we have. Different things in mind to get us there, to get us where we wanna be. Uh, one of, one of them is a, uh, possibly a one cent sales tax. Uh, uh, for EMS, that's just a proposal at this point, uh, but. It gets us on the right footing and, and I, I hope that you'll trust us and have faith that we're trying to do the best that we can. For the county and the community and, uh, I would just say. Uh, call us, email us personally and ask us where we are. Or get on our, uh, webpage and, and keep track. From time to time, I know you have better things to do, but. I want you to trust us and that's about the only way to do it, is to have communication, so. Uh, and then as far as the senior center, I'm behind it a hundred percent, so, you know. And I look forward to, to having more conversations with, with you. That's all I have.
I don't have anything, I don't believe.
Um, so one thing that kinda came to mind, uh, by a question I had this, this morning, as well as Commissioner Campbell's comments is. We had this meeting, um, just because we wanted to give people the, the opportunity to come and talk to us tonight. Our actual budget hearing meeting, our finance director is going to be present with this slideshow. Um, that he has built to explain where we're at. Um, that will also be available for the public, so just looking at what that looks like, I think some questions might come up, so I wanna just touch on a few highlights. Um, one of the things is in the election, um, there's a huge reduction in that and where that is, is we've pushed off. Not buying our new election equipment in twenty-six. Um, we are doing demos. We have had two so far. We have another one on Tuesday. Where we're demoing the new equipment, hearing the spiels, comparing the costs, looking at, you know, pros and cons. With that and with the R and R hearing, when people were saying, you know, think outside the box, you gotta get creative, you gotta change things, you gotta. Figure it out, right? Our, our county clerk came to us with a, a proposal of efficiencies, so. I wanna explain what that looks like. So Atchison County had ten polling locations, okay? So ten polling locations, twelve hours a day, seven to seven, um, throughout our elections. Those would have staff, we would pay rental for our locations. Um, what we're doing this year, starting this year, um, because it's not a presidential election, is we're gonna change it up. So we're looking at having two polling, we will have two polling locations, one in Atchison at Memorial Hall and one in Effingham at their. City building, so there's zero cost affiliated with the locations. So also thinking forward, right? When you replace equipment instead of ten locations and you have two tabulators, all the things that go into it. Um, you see cost savings in equipment, so it's forward-thinking. With efficiency in mind, we understand that it's change, right? That could be difficult, but we just want. We've heard nothing but positive. We've had, we've had a couple people, actually two, two concerned people on how the elderly do it, right? And, um, being part of a, a parish that's currently under remodel and seeing the elderly show up every Sunday in church. That drove, drove another ten to thirteen miles to get there every Sunday. We're talking about elections, right? Maybe a couple times a year. We just really hope the community, if there is an elderly, call us, like, we, we wanna help, we wanna get them there. You'll still have advanced voting at the courthouse, mail-in ballots available, so there's still opportunities. Um, but we really see this as, as a positive, um, and we've heard feedback of a positive, right? When I, the, the lady that reached out to me today, she's like, why the heck do I have, you know, and then I explained that and she's like, oh, I had no clue that we were. Paying for ten locations and poll workers at all of them and all the things, so it really does make sense if you understand. The, the why behind it and we just would really ask for, you know, community support through this, because change is hard, but, um. I think this, this is a good test, not being a big election to see, you know, what have the kinks and, and, and see how it goes, so. That's the only thing I wanna touch on, cuz when somebody sees this, they're gonna be like, where the heck? If it, it's because the election equipment was taken out, um.
I had asked, uh, Susan for like a rough estimate of what that would, uh, save just on the equipment. And she said conservatively about forty-one thousand dollars, just in equipment, voting equipment, savings, one, one thing. So.
These are the.
That's hard to ignore when you have budget things like this, so we're, we're trying to think out of the box. We're, we're not. This has not been a status quo year by any means.
And we appreciate the support with that.
And we, at this point, I could comment?
Sure.
Yeah.
Have any of you worked in elections? You're gonna have to have all the equipment, you're gonna have to have more than the four people that we can normally have.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yes.
A hundred percent.
Yep.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah.
It, it's not a total.
No, I would be happy to chat with you about like kind of what our ideas are right now for the setup. And, um, get any of your input.
You know.
Ideas, I mean, would have suggestions you would have.
Combining, what, five or six precincts in Effingham?
Uh, four.
Four.
Mm-hmm.
We've had two. So you're gonna have two more precincts, so you're going to have to have extra workers from what we normally have.
Yeah.
And extra machines.
Yeah. Yeah, but there've been, there've been the machines that have been at those other polling locations. They will all be able to come there to that location.
But how will it count each? Like, right now it counts each.
It separates the two that are currently there, so now it will be four.
Yep.
It, there's, there's a lot of things, but I would be happy to sit and chat with you about it, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're, and, and I've been on, I've talked with the Secretary of State, got suggestions there and. It, it is gonna be a, a bit of a learning curve for this year for sure.
Yeah, I guess fortunately it's not.
That's, that's was the big motivating factor to go ahead and pull the trigger and do it. Right away, because we can get our feet wet while it's smaller. And we also looked back at numbers. From four years ago, the last city school election and, and it was, it was done with a lot of data, not just, uh, hey, let's just do this. We really looked, we crunched.
Yeah, the numbers of people showing up at the like locations versus what we're paying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't expect a lot at this election, but just looking forward.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like you say, when did you see a whole bunch of people come in? Before they went to work and after work, what was your load during the day?
And if, well, at our last election in Effingham, it was constant all day. You know, and there were times when we had the line. And then you might have, you try to grab a bite of sandwich and then two or three more people come in.
They know when you go for a sandwich.
Early morning and then we did have a steady flow all day and then evening again, yeah.
Awesome. Yep, we'll just, you don't know till you try and we've, we're just trying to show the voters that we're trying. To look at efficiencies and, and cutting costs and with that, you gotta, you gotta do, do to know, so.
Are you gonna continue with paper ballots?
We'll still have paper ballots. Yeah.
Because there are a number of people who.
Yeah. Yes, but just to be clear, the, the ballot marking devices, it's still a paper ballot. It's just those devices are just like giant pencils that just mark the ballot for you. And you still get that back, the, the voter does, and they still have a piece of paper and they still put that piece of paper in the tabulator. It's just a lot, lot, lot less expensive for the county versus printing the others.
Which I was with you, cuz I'm like, yeah, there's no way we're gonna, like, I want paper. And then they show the demo and, and you go through it and you're like, oh, wait, it's just like my paper. So I can verify it's right before I put it in, just like I would fill in the bubbles with my pen. But it prints out, so you have paper to show, but.
Yeah.
Well, you have a paper ballot with the electronic, I mean, you, it's a strip.
Yeah.
It's a printout.
But it's, it's a printout, but the electronic.
Yeah.
But this sounds like a, another version of an electronic.
It's not, it's just a, it's just, it's just marked.
I think you'd be surprised.
When there's write-ins, you can actually read them, because they're typed in.
Did the state have any ideas that you came away with on these things?
Um, no, his, it, it was, it was mainly being, uh, I, I. I wanted to make sure with the state that we were doing everything that we need to do, crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is and doing everything, cuz. The integrity of the election is really important and, um, and making it accessible for people. The goal is not to make it less accessible, but. Um. And his, his main, his main thing was make sure you have enough equipment.
Is there a minimum you have to have?
No.
Cuz usually I just grab a paper one, set it all right and fill it out.
Yeah. No, there isn't, and I guess for, for us, as I understand, that's the majority of Atchison. Cuz people just want to do their handwritten paper and throw it in the tabulator, so.
That's where I was kinda going.
Yeah.
Machine, you could probably hold off on fewer, cuz the bolt-on paper.
We're required to have, we're required to have a, one of those machines. At least one for every polling location. Right now, we have one for all ten.
Right.
So we could, yeah, we could, we could split them up and have, have more available and see if we can get more people to use them, but, um. That's another reason.
You're still gonna have early voting.
A hundred percent, yeah.
So.
Oh, yeah.
So to your, so to your point, you can still come here and vote if you, if you want to.
Right, cuz a lot of people, when I work, that's, you come in after work and hit it.
That's my thing is when they're doing electronic, we get some that says, I can't do it. I don't go to hell, I don't go over near them, because we're not supposed to.
Yeah.
But we do have that, because here they are and now somebody that's working with me will. And they're right on top of them.
Yeah.
So that's it.
Yeah.
I understand that. Awesome. Well, I just wanted to point that out, cuz it's gonna be relevant here soon, um, and so I think that's good. And then, yeah, just like everybody said, if there's any other questions, feel free to reach out to us, um. And we appreciate everyone coming tonight very much, um.
Yes, your Sunday meeting is gonna be the same, and so I hear.
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Yep, it will be the same, uh, other than the slideshow with the finance director present, um, he'll be recapping it instead of me reading the highlights, so.
There's something, there's something, I mean, sit around that, there's gonna be, um, eleven positions cut here, courthouse. Is that fact?
Yep.
Yeah, personal services were reduced.
Okay, I just wanted to mention it.
Did you go into those offices and work with those staff to see how that's gonna affect those cuts?
We worked with that staff and discussing it and looking at metrics, um, and requesting numbers and, and.
So you, you spoke with every department head. And you understood the dynamics. The reason why I ask is certain offices I know of. There's people already doing two jobs and now that's gonna put a third job on them. Then you got other office that you have someone that they have a significant other that has some health concerns. So if they're out and the other person's out, then that office is gonna have to be closed. Which is now going to affect our county community.
Yeah, there's gonna have to be adjustments.
That's why. Anyone actually went in and set with these individuals to see how the day-to-day operations was.
Right, there's no doubt, there's gonna have to be adjustments. You, you, any, the, the, the real folks that are sacrificing in this are. The staff, okay? We had to make the decision, it wasn't easy. Uh, if I could have done it another way, it made sense moving forward, I would have suggested that we would have done it. But we've got to a point where it was necessary to do it and, and it, it is gonna take sacrifice, but it, but, but going forward. The, the real folks that are gonna deal with this are the ones that are losing positions. The folks that are gonna be left behind to take up that extra work and the department heads.
So they're still gonna hire for IT and we're still given raises.
We have to move forward. There's just no way around it. We cannot do it. We cannot, we cannot move forward as a, as a entity, government entity of the county if we're not. We, we can't stop spending money regardless. Raises are something else that we can't, you, you're not, you're not gonna stop doing that. I mean, down the road, you still have to give.
At one time, it was across the board, everybody got a raise or nobody got a raise. By what I'm seeing by this budget now, it's a pick and choose and that doesn't seem right to me.
Well, I'm not gonna go into detail about specific raises. I can't do it. We, we can't, we can't do it.
I just felt like if we're cutting job.
I understand.
We shouldn't be raising.
I, I get it, trust me, I get it. It is, it is something that we've had to wrestle with. I understand the. The thought process completely, I really do. And, and, and I'm sorry that we had to go this route. Um, but it was necessary to do it and if, I don't know, if you've got any thoughts on that, but.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, we, we brainstormed so many different scenarios, um, from redu-, like, but we couldn't get. The numbers that we needed to bring the taxes down, so one scenario, right, just looking across the board. What if we did thirty-two hour work week for everybody non-essential, right? That only helped us two hundred thousand dollars versus lowering personal services to the dollar amount we need to give the tax. Sustainability of, of lowering it and.
You lowered the hours for thirty-two a week, didn't give out raises, didn't hire another physician. That would kinda help it out.
No, it didn't help.
The raises, they're not as impactful as you think. They, they're, they're, they, they, they give a bad look if, if that's. And, and, and I understand that. They, 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 they give a bad look, if, if that's, and, and, and I understand that, but the impact, the dollar amount impact.
It wasn't there.
It's still playing the. It's not there, all the raises, it's just not.
The benefits are still all there, so that's, there's no savings there. Sort of something else I was gonna say about that.
Well, I think it's very important to, to let the public know, though, right, like, we heard you. We made adjustments to lower the taxes to prevent everyone from being taxed out of their home, with that does come. An impact of, you might have to get an appointment when you come up to get your tags, like, I don't know what leaders are gonna do to adjust. To what they have to adjust to, but I can tell you all support it one hundred and ten percent, and when the public calls and says, hey, I had to wait longer, or hey, I couldn't do this. I'm sorry, like, it's not a win-win, it's actually like, anywhere, but.
I have a feeling you're gonna lose staff because they're taking on more work.
Well, I really hope not, because we value our people, and I'm, we. It's, it's not easy, but from a constituent standpoint, I hope that everybody gives grace that with change comes, you know. You might have to wait a little longer, or you might have, you know, we're, we don't know, but we have, we. We did know that we couldn't not do anything because our taxes were ridiculous, and that's not. Not, not gonna be sustainable.
Do you have copies of your new budget available, people?
Yes, that he put it on our, our website, so, yes, there's one there, if you need a hard copy, I'd be more than happy to pray in one if you need.
When's the budget, when do you have to have the budget ready?
We have to vote on Sunday at ten fifteen. And why that is, I think I said it at the beginning, but I want to, I want to reiterate that. We do not want to meet on Sunday, but based on state statute. We had to be ten days after publication in our local newspaper, which was Thursday, September eleventh. So when you fast forward, that hits the twenty-first, which then, on the backside, you have a statute that's ten days prior to October one, so. Sunday, the twenty-first is the date. I keep saying, like, with the state, we need to tell them that with their statutes, they should not include Saturday and Sunday, like, but. That's another thing, that, it is what it is, we have to, you have to meet the.
How we got there was, we were following the state guidelines on their budget recommendations when you need to have everything done. We'd set the date. According to that, well, we had someone from another entity call us and said, hey, that doesn't follow. It's not in the guidelines it's given, but it's in the details that you need to have it ten days before Oc- October first. We were following the guidelines, but they weren't stated there, so at the very last moment, we got that caught, and that's the reason for the Sunday meeting. There was no intent to do anything except for, once we found that out, and we had the option, we can still. Be, fall, get everything done if we have the Sunday meeting, then it was a no-brainer that we're gonna do it according to the sta-, uh, statutes.
And to follow up on that, we remedied the situation, and our finance director contacted the state and said. You gotta put this on the budget calendar that everyone's going by, so we've done that, and also, starting at the first of the year. The clerk and the finance director are gonna have our calendar outlined. Of what our dates are, so that we can let everybody know that, like, ahead of time, as well as department head, we, we'll all know. What the road looks like in twenty-twenty-six at the beginning of the year versus, you know. Rolling with this meeting, this meeting, oh gosh, our dates, you know, it's, so.
Especially just get one time deal.
Yeah.
Will we get any more notification before our property tax bills come out, as to what the impact is gonna be now?
No.
Okay. It seemed like a couple years ago, we got two lots, boom, boom, and I'm like.
Well, because it had the wrong location.
Right.
So we had to send it again, because it had, four oh nine was meeting.
Until December, or end of November. Whenever they come out.
That was a good question of how to. Yeah, December first, I think, is the. Deadline for them to email.
And can you get online any sooner and get that information?
I need to find that.
Like, if you're paying your taxes online, you look at all the different values and stuff?
I don't think so.
No, okay.
Now, Susan, like she said, you get online and you pay.
Yeah.
These unfortunate people that lost a job, how much AI is gonna pick up the slack so these people ain't gonna get overwhelmed? You know what I mean, you see it, you work with it every day.
Yeah, I, I don't have any AI picking up any slack.
I mean, let me show you, like, you do it online, it's, it's done.
Oh, with the payment online, so that would be like in the treasurer's office, yeah, I don't know how many, I don't know how many payments they get, they get online.
Oh.
Not very many, because you have to pay.
To your point, to your point, technology is.
It's gonna take out some of this.
Does, does make a difference, no, I get what you're saying, yeah, and that's, and that is a consideration going forward, is, is how is technology. A way to help with some of these tasks.
Some of the.
We use an HCH.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that same question, can you still pay but via check over, because that, that was a.
They might have changed it to where you couldn't do electronic check, but you couldn't before, it had to then be a card. Just as if you went to the treasurer's office to do any kind of renewal or title work. And you used a card, there's a three percent, the county's not making, and that's one thing people don't understand, it's not the county charging that three percent. It's actually the state that charges it, they won't absorb that fee, so they put it on.
Yeah, like everything else.
So that's why a lot of them don't do taxes online that way. Because then they're paying so much.
Yeah.
Was it, okay, see, you have the budget set, and yet it's not gonna move. Set by Sunday. You know what, you know what you're putting out there, and it's.
That's where I'm at.
It's a done deal.
That's what we're.
It is for me.
I'm, I'm, I'm there too, yeah, yeah.
Like the, that poll that you did, it was on CARE, I can't remember, it said something about.
Oh, the survey, sorry.
Did you?
Yes, I have.
Did I take it like the Millie Earhart and all that stuff, it's gone now, right, we're not giving them money, I mean, it's bigger than, better than ever, why?
Well, so unfortunately, many of our appropriations were.
So that.
Were cut.
Yeah.
They didn't get any for twenty twenty-five, this current year, they didn't get any, and they're still the same.
But I asked, what the survey is?
Yeah, I was just gonna tell you that, but real quick, just to tell you.
Surveys.
Uh, so it was on your property tax R and R notice. The survey was on the back of there, the link to it, and then if you needed, I've had people call me and I would bring them a hard copy, so.
It was all online.
Yeah.
It was a QR.
Or available at.
Everybody I've talked to said, what survey?
Yeah, and it was at the R and R. It, we had hard copies at our hearing too.
Backside of it. Who looks at the backside?
That's what I was afraid of.
Well, not to mention the print, the R and R statements were pretty small this year. So that, you were too busy focusing on that, then.
I'm actually reading that.
I'll, I'll, talk about the survey results in just a second, I just want to touch base on one comment about the Millie Earhart Festival, is. That actually is a huge impact to our county when it comes to sales tax. We saw it, and our finance director pointed it out to us, and I was like, can you confirm that's over the, and every year, July spikes, like, so with. Some of our services being paid for, for our sales tax, like, those events that bring that type of tourism into town, it's, it's wonderful, I mean, any dollar. Acheson County can collect is gonna be wonderful, so, but real quick, before we adjourn our survey results. I have, we had four questions, so do you believe Acheson County should be zoned? No, was sixty-two percent. There was a total of three hundred and six responses.
Yeah, we do.
Um. Would you consider a one-cent sales tax for the next ten years to offset property tax for EMS and rescue? Seventy-three percent of three hundred and three responses was yes. Should Acheson County fund only organizations with statutory responsibility? Two hundred and eighty-eight people said, which was seventy-two percent, said yes. But I think that is that question that, like, to understand the impact of, and. Like Conservation District, our twenty-five thousand, then gets the state match, which goes up to fifty thousand, and then federal funding, so if we cut our. County, it would be devastating, because the rest of the layers are, are committed based on our amount, so just to. Just to understand why some of the decisions were made when it's not exactly what the survey says, same with Project Concern. When they come to us and say, hey, if you don't give us this money, we're shutting down this center, you know, the, the, those are decisions, we have to make what's best for the county and, and, and some of these instances, so just want to point that out. And then four was, are there county services that need improvement and don't justify your tax dollars? Two hundred and seventy-two responses, seventy-six percent said yes, so. Um, all right, well, with that, if there's not anything else, I would look for, we got right on an hour here, so we appreciate all of your time taking out of your Friday night to spend with us. But I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
All of you guys.
Did you see it in the election?
A roller coaster for it.
I know, I know.
I'm glad you're there, and I'm not.
Thank you, Pearl.
Hey, you gonna stick here?
Yeah, thanks for coming, guys.
Yeah.
I'm curious where it went, you know.
Well, yeah, you coming back Sunday morning?
I don't know, nothing's changing, like she said, nothing's really happening.
So that number.